Good morning. May 20th, 9:30 a.m. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Griggs County Commission. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to roll call. Avriel.
Here.
Tranby.
Here.
Zorn.
Here.
Edlund.
Here.
And Wakefield's present. Have a look at the agenda.
The Fair Board took themselves off. They're not ready yet so that they will be added at the next meeting.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, you took the Fair Board off here? We have a motion, excuse me, by Edlund to approve the agenda. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Avriel. All in favor have approved the agenda as presented, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda approved. If we'll have a look at the May 6th meeting minutes to start with. This would be the regularly scheduled meeting. Last two weeks ago.
I was here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, May 6th.
Yeah, because we were in the courtroom again.
Yeah, so Tranby absent.
Let's get you on.
Okay. I thought I was here.
If we were in the courtroom, there's a lot of other people. So let's, let me go back on the notes of all the roll call. I must have forgotten to come back to that.
I'm pretty sure it was here. Yeah, because you looked down at the minutes here. I mean, there a couple times. You follow me?
And there was a lot of, lot more people than just State's Attorney Tennessee, so yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 6th minutes and dispense with the reading with the adjustment of Tranby being present with a correction.
I think we should add to the, this is the sheriff's discussion. I think we should add a notation that if further information is desired and refer them to the, refer them to the website and the audio of that meeting in the notes here.
Okay.
Because they really, I mean, for the length of that meeting, it's a paragraph. It really doesn't cover anything. I mean, by them, by the public reading, they don't really have any, any way of knowing what took place. So I think there should be a notation referring them to the website or the YouTube site. Parentheses, I think, how was it? Was it labeled the May 6th meeting? Or, excuse me. Was it May 6th? Yeah, that was the last one. And some of it's been published. I see the paper had some of it. There's been other places, but it's really the minutes of, on the county site would be And I think in the last paragraph, there was a discussion on what the county would like to do going forward with the position. It gives the impression that we had any choice. I think the next, the next sentence, motion by Tranby to advertise for the appointed sheriff's position, seconded by Zorn, and called three times for discussion with all eyes and no a's. I think that would cover it.
You just want me to take that out? That's the ninth meeting. We still need a motion for the sixth.
Yeah, we can do them all at the same time, aren't we? Do we have a motion on the floor to accept the May 6th meeting minutes?
I'll second that.
Second by Tranby. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. May 6th minutes approved. Now on to the May 9th meeting minutes. This was a special meeting in dealing with the resignation and what we're going to do
I'll make a motion to accept the May 9th minutes with...
Keep going. We have the same thing here, but you have me absent again.
With the correction of Tranby present and the removal of the sentence in the third Or corrections, you could just say.
There's a motion on the table by Edlund to accept the May 9th meeting minutes with a correction to the wording in the third paragraph dealing with the sheriff's position and the addition of Tranby to the agenda or to, as being present.
Present, yeah.
Some question as to whether he's invisible now. Do we need a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Second by Zorn. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. May 9th, special meeting minutes approved.
And then the 16th is right behind the agenda.
16th is forward of that. Have a look at the May 16th special.
Oh, there it is.
You're there.
Meeting minutes.
You're here, this one.
Cool.
I got you there.
And the same thing on this one. There was a discussion on how the county would like to go forward and the steps the county needs to take going forward. Maybe there was discussion on the county's course of action considering the appointment And motion by Edlund to appoint Rick Cushman as sheriff, elected 2:01 p.m. It should be effective, correct?
Yeah. What did I say?
Six.
Is elected, huh?
Oh, 6:01.
Yeah.
It's effective.
Effective, effective.
Effective, yeah.
Yeah.
It should be effective.
Oh, gotcha.
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion to accept the minutes with the corrections in the third paragraph and dispense with the reading.
We have a motion by Edlund to accept the May 16th meeting minutes with corrections made to the issue of sheriff. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Avriel. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. May 16th meeting minutes approved. Bills. Sam?
The thing that I see. It's good.
We're good? Have a look at that.
The only one that if you need some information, the South Central Dakota Regional on the bottom of page seven, that is from not this year's dues, but last year's dues. We don't pay those dues until we get the one-fourth from all of the cities. And I was still waiting on one of the cities when we already had it already back, so this
Sam, I still haven't got there.
What the heck? I have you.
Oh, here it is, yeah.
I was like, what the heck?
I'll make a motion to accept the bills as presented.
We have a motion by Edlund to accept the bills as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tranby. We'll move on to a roll call vote. Aye to the positive, nay to the negative. Avriel.
Aye.
Tranby.
Aye.
Zorn.
Aye.
Edlund.
Aye.
Wakefield votes aye. Bill's approved. Sheriff's office.
In your packet, you do have a resume from Amber Lee Michaelis and also a application from Marcus Holland. Amber was scheduled to be here today to answer some questions and kind of ask some questions, but she's unable to attend this morning. She has asked that you guys have a special meeting sometime this week. I haven't gotten a response from her as to what time day works best for her. So if we could just kind of put that on the radar and then I can talk to her and get something scheduled.
My suggestion is that if there's two applicants, that he should set up an interview and interview
That's correct.
I just got done speaking with Rick. He's on his way to meet with the fire marshal for the coachman, so he wasn't going to be here. I think the fire marshal gets here at 10:00.
That's right. I talked with him also.
But he's been busy and he's gotten some phone calls and I think he's getting a grasp of it. But I'm guessing he'd probably rather someone else take the helm sooner than later.
So we don't have a whole lot of information here on how to move forward. Ideally, if we have two candidates, one could be the sheriff and one could be a deputy.
Correct. Yeah, if the sheriff was pointed, the commission really doesn't, I mean, sheriff will have to hire a person. I guess one caveat for everybody is that we've got a write-in election coming up and I think it's, the sooner this gets taken care of, the better for the candidates because we have a write-in election where ballots are already out and people are already voting and returning ballots. So if there's going to be write-in candidates, I think, or a sheriff serving, it's only fair to get it done right away.
But do you want to set up meetings to, for interviews for these two separately?
They could be the same day.
Day.
But, yeah. Yeah, we just schedule a half hour, 45 minutes apart.
Yeah. Okay, that works. I'm just glad, I'm happy we got, we got people interested. Is Mark still valid? Is his license still valid, do we know? Or he has to go through training all over again?
I think they probably both are going to have to do the two weeks of training. I'm not 100% sure, but I would guess that is the case.
I don't see, I don't see anything on either one of them as far as...
Amber still has her. She just has to qualify for shooting.
Okay.
Say that again.
Amber still, her license is still valid. She just has to shoot. She just has to qualify for shooting.
Or she resented for someone that she was able to keep it?
I don't know. I just asked the question.
Let's see, I saw a sheriff's vehicle leaving Jesse going east, west this morning when it came to town. Evidently, that must be Steel County.
Yeah, because our three vehicles are sitting out front.
There were here yesterday, patrolling too.
HP was. HP was in town for quite a while.
And Steel too.
Is that who Rick's been able to assign as Highway Patrol to help us out?
So Highway Patrol has been scheduled here. We owe a bunch of people a debt of gratitude. The Highway Patrol changed their schedules, so they have someone in the county quite a bit. And I know Beckman came over here during the fire. He was here yesterday. I spoke with him yesterday. And yeah, if there, it was a white vehicle, a white pickup, it was more than likely Steel County.
No, it was a, it was a black.
Oh, it was black.
Similar, I mean, similar to ours.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, I thought it was ours, but then when I got here, ours were both sitting there, so.
Nelson County has one that looks like ours.
Well, Nelson County has all explorers in one pickup, so it could have been Nelson County too. I haven't spoken with Kirk. I don't know.
It was coming out of Jesse and him heading west.
So Sheriff Beckman came and helped with the fire? Wonderful.
Yeah, he was over here. I don't know, but I think he was here for a while Saturday night. I don't feel sure he was here yesterday.
So the special meeting then is dependent on when?
They're both able to attend, basically. So is there any way we can contact them both, reach out to them and set something up and then see what's best for them? Explain to them that we're going to do this. We'd like to do them together if possible.
Yep, I can get something set up. Does any daytime not work for you guys?
It'll have to be adjusted around your schedule, mother.
Got it.
Sorry. Kind of loud. This vibration.
Jamie, anything else in the sheriff's office?
No, that's all I have. We do, oh, I should say, we have some pending cases that, that need some completed investigation. So the sooner we can get someone in, we have victims in some of those cases. So I think the better, the quicker that we can get those done, get someone in position to work on those cases, the better we are for the citizens.
Is that a play on, well, if that's all in the sheriff's office, then anything else? 10:15. Is that a play in words, Cheyenne River Trail, or is it just a misspelling?
No, that's me. Sorry. Yep.
All right.
But the Fair Board was right before them and I took the Fair Board off and so that's why there's...
Okay, so then, sales ratio study. Still waiting to hear back from the state?
I haven't heard back from the state yet too. I spoke with Linda Savoyak from the Association of Counties. She forwarded me to Cass County to their tax director and he stated that our best bet was probably Al. I spoke with the tax, I spoke with Shelley, well, the State Tax Commissioner's Office. She's, they've been listening to the meetings, so they know that we're trying to get stuff done. They said that they probably won't be as gracious this year as what they have been in the past. But no, that we're trying to get stuff done and she was going to call me back with some information today at some point. She did give me the name of a Dickey County tax director. I haven't spoken with him yet. I actually met him a couple weeks ago, so I'll shoot an email out to him and see if he has any interest in doing this for us.
Personally, I think it's time to take a hard stand on this. These people are public officials. They are indebted to the citizens of Griggs County, just like we are. We don't have the resources to do this. They do. They should step up and do the sales ratio study. They work for the taxpayers of Griggs County, just like everybody else does, like we do. They have these resources to do it. There's still a big question whether or not they even have the ability to tell us to do it. That's never, ever, ever been put in front of us and said, here's what you have to do. It's also very evident, and I hope they are listening, that the Century Code says that the sales ratio study is not the only or the chosen means of equalization. And the legislature made a special point of putting that into the Century Code. So if these people don't want to do their job, then the citizens of Griggs County should be asking the elected officials, why not? Because we've tried everything we can. Why should the citizen spend money when they're already paying these bureaucrats out in Bismarck to sit there and not do nothing?
After I spoke with Jamie on Friday to follow up and he updated me on the information, they said to go contact Al or they gave the name Al. So I did reach out to Al again. I was like, hey, would you mind sending in again a new agreement for the sales ratio study because it is due by June, the three parts? And we are bumping up. I, my belief, your belief, my belief is we need to get this done. We have the money, the budget to have, Al's willing to do it once again this year. And, and we really need to get the sales ratio study completed.
Can you explain, can you explain why? I mean, I, you keep saying we have to get it done, but what's the benefit to the citizens doing that? I mean, your opinion, fine, but you, if you didn't, if you weren't paying attention here these last month and a half, the citizens do have a say in how this, how this whole thing is run. And they rose up pretty, pretty effectively and got done what they wanted done with the sheriff's department. What is the benefit to the citizens of spending $30,000 to do a sales ratio study that we do not use in order to do the equalization and obviously does not benefit the citizens because the sales ratio study raises valuations and raising valuations raises taxes? So you can sit here and say, I think we should do it, but don't you think you owe a explanation to the people that you're going to put the burden on? And, and I haven't heard one. I have not, I've asked this question, Stephanie, time and time again, and no one ever, no one ever answers it. They just say, I think we should do it. I told you why I don't think we should do it, is because it's a burden to the citizens. There should be a counter to that argument.
It, it is a Century Code stating that, that the sales ratio study needs to be done.
You can quote that to me?
Yeah, I'm opening it up right now. And I believe you guys have all received this information in emails before too. And it is directly written on the property tax assessment states' sales ratio study. North Dakota Century Code, 57-01-054. And Jamie, if you want to review that too, to ensure that we get the legal opinion on that, that it says that the state supervisor of assessments to conduct a sales ratio study, it is due every year. We're going to end up sending out taxes again every year.
Read that, read that again for us.
Well, for them to analyze.
No, no, read it, read it from the start. The state, read it.
Provides authority to the...
No, no, who, read it right from the start.
The Century, North Dakota Century Code states, provide authority to the state supervisor of assessments.
There we go. It doesn't say the county supervisor of assessments. It says the state supervisor of assessments and that's been my argument all along.
But all the other counties complete it and get it done in time and we're, end up sending out, sending out taxes again with zero, with, tell them we don't know what your taxes are going to be this year. We look like fools. We did that last year, doing it again.
No, we don't look like fools. We look like fools when we spend $30,000 in order to raise people's taxes and spend another hundreds of thousands of dollars in excess taxes.
Then why do all of the other counties do it and yet we don't?
Because they're sheep. It's why. We have a system in place that was working just fine and all of a sudden it wanted to get interrupted because there were certain taxing entities within the county that needed more money. And all of a sudden, we have push, push, push to raise valuations, which raises taxes, which doesn't do anything good. And you just read it. The state is the one responsible, not the county. So that's, that's the idea is the citizens deserve to know why their taxes are being raised and who's pushing to raise them and whether or not they need to be raised and more importantly, who's responsible for this study. And the state is responsible for it, not the county. We don't, it doesn't even, in the equalization, for the, for the county commissioners, it doesn't mandate that we use a sales ratio study at all. This argument that because we have to is a silly argument. You just proved that, that, that isn't the case. The state does this.
I support that, Alan. I'm afraid that if we don't get this done, we won't get anybody to assist us in doing this. And then where are we going to be?
Right where we are right now, self-governed. As where, as where we should be, deciding evaluations, deciding evaluations for the citizens rather than having the state decide evaluations because the state never revises evaluations, not when it's always up. The whole purpose of county government and local government is self-governance.
I would like, I would like us to have Alan do the sales ratio study so we can get that done and completed and move forward with this. With that being said, I am going to make a motion for, to accept the sales ratio agreement provided by Alan to complete the sales ratio and, and have that done.
First of all, we're outside the protocol, but let's just do that. Let's, let's vote to see whether or not the citizens want to be charged $30,000 for a sales ratio study that we have reached out to the state and reached out to other people to do. And then let's, let's see what happens there. So we have, we have a motion on the table by Edlund to spend $30,000 for a sales ratio study that again was unsolicited. This just showed up.
I asked for it.
You don't have the ability to ask for it. This was unsolicited, showed up on the county commission agenda, unsolicited. We never asked for that of the commission. It shouldn't even be, it shouldn't even be presented.
I can ask for that. What I can't do is make decisions, but...
You just are making decisions. You just said you can ask for it, no way you can't. We didn't, that is unsolicited. It shouldn't even been on the agenda. Motion by Edlund to approve the $30,000 contract for a sales ratio study. Alan Wittmer. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Tranby. We'll go to a voice vote on this after a discussion. So as long as anybody, everybody understands what we're doing here, we're going to charge the citizens of Griggs County $30,000 for a study, a sales ratio study that we turned on before, that he offered to do for $15,000, that we turned on before, for a contract that doesn't, for a sale, for a equalization director that doesn't even make him come to the office. He's going to be absent from Griggs, absent from Griggs County. Anything else to add to the discussion? What do you think, Jamie?
Ultimately, I don't get to make the decision. $30,000 is a lot of money to spend for something like that.
We turned on $15,000 here two months ago.
And we had a contract to do it for 10.
That's correct.
And then she backed out.
Right.
And what is the penalty? And what is the penalty for not doing this? No one's, no, there, you, you people seem to think that somehow we're supervised or on a leash of the state. We're not. We are an independent body. We are the, we are the first governing body of Griggs County. That's it. And to be told, be told that you spend thirty thousand dollars now because the state says we should, but as Stephanie read the century code to us, the state's, the state's responsibility, not ours. Nowhere in there does it say the county has to do that. We've been through this many, many times. This is, this is all an attempt to raise money for valuations for a couple of the taxing entities in Griggs County. And it's a, it's a round the back effort to try to do it. It's ridiculous. And we'll see whether or not citizens want that done. So we'll move on to a voice vote on this. Uh, any more discussion, first of all? Borrowing no further discussion, uh, we have a motion on the table for a sales ratio agreement for thirty thousand dollars. Alan Wittmer is the owner of the, of the company that's gonna do it, Spectrum North Dakota Real Estate. Uh, again, a voice vote on this. Aye to the positive, nay to the negative. Avriel? What's that?
Nay.
Tranby?
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Wakeville votes nay. Common sense prevails. Motion denied. Back in session at, uh, ten oh six. Uh, Wayne Township Mileage Certification? What's that about? Was that Samantha?
That's me. Um, this is just an annual.
Like a Wayne thing.
Sorry. Nope, it's just an annual thing that you guys have to do. Um, so I did it for you and I just need your signature.
So if you guys will look over the county township road mileage certifications and we'll need a motion in order for us to approve and sign out.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Tranby, or excuse me, by Zorn to approve the county township road mileage certifications. Is there a second? Second by Avery. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mileage certifications approved. Beer and liquor license.
Um, the Sutton. Would like a new beer and liquor license.
Mary, did you send us three month or six month or whatever?
They're at six months.
Six months, no, okay. If you feel so inclined, we'll need a motion to that. For both of them, beer and liquor license. Motion by Avriel to approve the, uh, Sutton Sports Bar and Grill, six month beer and liquor license. Is there a second to that motion?
Well, second time.
Second by Zorn. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. License is approved.
Samantha, did someone call from Cheyenne?
Yep, yep. I set her up. So she wanted to know where she was supposed to go and told her here, so.
Maybe she's following the trail that isn't completed yet.
Well, Bobby Kreplin, I think it is, called me. Sounded like they would provide all the new, if there was a sign knocked down or whatever, they would provide a new sign. Sounded like they would pay for us to put it back up. And then, well, she'll say, I'm sure, a lot of those same entities that had responsibility for along the dam and stuff like the Corps of Engineers, game and fish, would still be responsible for those landings and stuff, but if you read the memorandum, it doesn't say that.
No, I, 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 yeah. So it's, it's, um, there's no doubt it, it's a worthwhile project, but it, it's not a project that should be, that should have the responsibility of Griggs County. It, it should be, it's used by the public in, in general, not just Griggs County residents. And it should be managed by those, by the same. It should be with a federal estate where the game and fish, whoever wants to have that. But it, it certainly shouldn't be a responsibility of Griggs County, just because it resides here.
Yeah, maybe she'll explain more exactly the requirements are for us.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, it looks like there's a lot of counties that are doing it, I guess. And their claim was, of course, to bring people in to Griggs County. It's a walking trail or driving or what it is, I guess, bicycle.
Well, old courthouse, new courthouse.
Well, Brian reached out to me and he said, yeah, bricks are falling off. From edges and everything. I don't, I guess he was saying we weren't sure, but yeah, it is starting to fall apart, so.
Yeah, that's why the fence got broken off.
Yeah. I just know there was a little, you guys weren't a hundred percent sure, but he said, yeah, for sure that bricks are falling off.
You know, I, I know we've talked about this and our hands are pretty well tied with what we can do with it, but it's hateful if there's any way that things could be salvaged out of it. You know, all that woodwork and the doors. You know, to just let it go to nothing and then have, you know, then just pile, you know, boulders, it is hateful.
That, the woodwork and, and, and this, and some of the metalwork and things in there have a high value outside of North Dakota.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, that stuff gets into a met, a major metropolitan area, especially the east coast and, and it's just, and I don't think it would be hard to advertise that and get a, a company to come in and do that.
Yeah. I, I used to haul, um, they would, the, the old barns that were built with the hand of hume. We'd haul that out east and it was crazy money.
Yeah, and this is really, I mean, this stuff is so unique. I mean, you have ten foot doors with the transoms and.
We just went through the graduation where that the Mason building yesterday.
Yeah.
Same thing, you know, just beautiful woodwork as well.
Yeah, and it was built, you know, that was built thirty days, thirty years later. Yeah.
Yeah. But yeah, it'd be hateful to just leave and go to where we have to do it and if we could do something with it, but. I don't know.
Same thing with those old fixtures and there are people paying money for the whole fixtures to be repaired for every time too.
In order to do something first with that, like take it apart, you need to have a history, a historian, architect come through and do the, uh, fill up the paperwork to give to the state.
And that costs us how much?
You know what? It's been over a year since I got quotes for that. It's, I think it was like three, five, and one of them was like fifteen thousand. But it's a few thousand dollars to do that. But you have to have that done or do anything with it. I can get the quotes again if you guys would like to go out and get those quotes again. It's for the architect, the historian to, how much would be to do that paperwork to get it off to the state?
In the, in the original agreement signed, I don't know if it's specifically spelled out whether or not we had to maintain it in its original condition, but it couldn't be, demolition by neglect was not allowed. So is there a point in there where the interior could be sold off? And the structure's still sand? I don't know that.
I can ask.
Yeah. I mean, obviously that's probably what they're gonna say, yes, but is that actually spelled out? I've never seen that. The, the, like I said, the phrase was, you couldn't allow demolition by neglect. And that's what they always fell back on. It had to be maintained. Well, did it need to be heated? No, it didn't need to be heated, but so it's a really a gray, a really a gray line.
And if you're not allowing anybody to go in there, you know.
I can email Lorna and ask her. She's at the historian, Historical Society.
She is. I think she's still there. And, and when, when she answers, we need to have some kind of document to back up her answer. It can't be an opinion. Cause we're not, we're to the point where we, opinions aren't gonna be what drives us forward. It's gonna be the actual the penalties in the law for doing or not doing something. And of course, keep in mind, if we were gonna do something as far as tearing it down, that's almost gonna have to be put to the, to the voters and the bond issues. I mean, I don't know what it's gonna cost, but probably more than we can budget in any one year.
Yes, there was any value and I could reach out. And see if I can track down that place where we used to haul that, cause they would take all that stuff and mill it and then sell it. They, they would redo hardwood flooring and everything. Um, and see what kind of, you know, value there is, you know, would, would that offset us getting it torn down? But then where, you know, those guys just bought the, well, they had somebody tear these barns down and torn down by hand.
Yeah.
There had to have been a major cost to that as well.
Do you want me to go and get the quotes again for the historical architect to see how much it would be to update that? So if we do decide to move anything further, we can send that off to the state and at least they have, last time it's been updated, the, it's been seven, nineteen seventy-four. His last one has been updated. So really to get any full answers from the state, that part needs to be.
We could figure out what that's gonna cost and like you said, figure out if, if it's in the contract, if we're even allowed to do that or not.
So we've been through this as many, many times.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's one step and it's another step.
We can't, we got, we gotta quit doing that. We, we have to get a list. What does it take in order to be able to tear this down? Give us a checklist. Give us your answer on if we complete this checklist, can we tear it down? That's where we have to be because we keep getting sucked into this and we've spent upwards of thirty, forty thousand dollars now over the last fifteen years.
Wasn't it last year that they came on the meeting and discussed with us the?
Two years ago.
Oh, so you guys weren't here when we last talked to them?
No, and they, and, and they wouldn't answer the question. They, they would just say, here's the next step. And they've never answered that question. And we'll, and we'll pose it to them in many different ways, but we've, it's been in writing from the state's attorney. What do we need in order to be able to tear this down?
Well, I have the letter from Lorna, the original one, in here that I can send out to you guys. That's from, I'm opening it up right now, from two thousand nineteen, when Jamie first inquired. There was five steps. I'll send this out to you guys.
Yeah, I, what was missing, what was missing at the end of it was a disclaimer. If these tasks are accomplished, permission is hereby granted to raise the building. That's what is needed.
Well, it's.
And that's never comes. They, they won't ever fall into that.
It, once these measures have been, have been completed and approved by our office, then they will allow you to, but you have to get it all into the office to review before they can do anything. So I mean, it's kind of the risk is there if you wanna, you have to get the information to the office for them to review before you can do anything.
But, but the risk shouldn't be there. It, it should be, it should be flat out. Complete this task, that accomplishes that task. Complete this task, it accomplishes that task. When all the tasks are completed, you can tear it down because how can they say we don't know what you have to do to tear it down? We have to look at it first. That can't be possible. There has to be a scenario that you can follow through to do it. They won't give it to you because they always want to have control. And there we are. One step, well, okay, I was closer. Now this step is closer and according to that, then we'll prove it. So we get to, maybe we get to a step and they say, no, it's not approved. Then everything you done is, is in the dump again.
There, I sent it to you too. Brad, uh, you get used to it if it still have it. Scott.
So we, we can try to get them nailed down again, but that's the way I, that's the only way to move this thing forward without just throwing good money after bad.
Is it gonna cost us money to reach out to them again or is that?
No, not to tell them, no, no.
Oh yeah, I think we could, should, if there are bricks falling, we probably should at least reach out and but like, you know, it sounds to me like it's a a pretty gray area where you do the task and then they're gonna still say no. You know.
So through, through this whole thing, there's been emails back and forth, back and forth, prior to this commission on discussions with the state, if they went forward with this thing and how it was gonna take place. And through the open records process, before I was a commissioner and we came, we, we, we got all those emails. And it was very evident that this was never going, the, the present people in charge at the state were never gonna allow this to be torn down. Even, it was even said i- in that, to that effect, Griggs County courthouse will never be torn down.
You can call Lorna at the state too and ask her.
Yeah.
The phone number's in the email I sent to you guys. Go ahead and make calls.
You know, is it because it's at the, obviously it's the.
It's on a national historic register.
Yeah.
The, the feds have relinquished the decision to the state. This, the fed said, whatever the state says, we'll go along with, you'll have to remove it from the national historic register, but there's a process to that. And here's the process. State needs to make the decision.
But now when there's bricks falling off, is there a point of danger coming into play that they would have to, or then that is that come to the neglect?
Little thing, get call Lorna, ask Lorna. Those are things that, yeah.
This is, this is gonna, this is going to take a court action to fix this. And unfortunately, I'm, I'm the agreement that's in place is we're gonna lose. So the minute we, we, the minute we say that there's bricks falling off, that they're gonna refer to the. That's my prediction, yeah.
What happens if something majorly happens like half falls down? I mean, major happens, you know. Then what happens if, if I'm, you know, forced to do something?
So the, so the re- the response, the, the response, I believe, from the federal government via the state would be punitive. They would require us to pay back a portion or all of the million dollars that was supposedly the free money that was the impetus for building this damn thing in the first place. That's, that's what it was predicated on. And it is so convoluted because the courthouse, the courthouse site and the courthouse grounds are not even the actual possession of the county. They've been, they've been leased to the building authority for the duration of the, of the loan on this building. Because they couldn't separate it. So in order, in order to use this building as collateral, the prior building authority entered into a lease agreement and the county leased the building authority for twenty years, irrevocable lease, this whole block, including the old courthouse. So this is, this is so entangled that I, I, I don't, I don't know how, I wouldn't even know how or how much money it would take to get this thing straight, no. I know right now the cheapest solution is that fence around there.
Is there, in that contract that we have, is there an act of God? Clause like if a tornado or lightning or something was strike?
The, it's been a while since I read the lease agreement and, uh, and the contract with the the building authority, but so the, the county had to maintain the insurance on both buildings, this building and that building. And if the buildings were destroyed, the money didn't go to the county. The money went to the building authority and the building authority could decide whether or not they rebuilt or not. It would be a whole new contract be- because of course the cost of, of construction would be way higher. So in the event this burnt down or that got destroyed, the, the county wouldn't get any dollars from it. It would go to the building authority and then they would negotiate. So in the event this burnt down or that got destroyed, the, the county wouldn't get any dollars from it. It would go to the building authority and then they would negotiate a new contract with the county in order to build another courthouse, if they so desired. There was nothing tying them to that. So if it got knocked down, I don't know what the lease agreement says and who's responsible for cleaning that up, but I would imagine that county, as the county was responsible for everything in the lease agreement, although the building authority had possession. A pretty one-sided document. Is a pretty one-sided document. So we can come back to that. Um, Cheyenne Trail, you're here for the Cheyenne Trail?
I am. Thank you.
Yeah. You can, you can stand, sit, you can do whatever you want.
Thank you Chairman Whitefield. I'm Mary Lee Nielsen and I'm with the Cheyenne Valley Water Trail Advisory Committee and we're a section of the, the Byway. And we are in the midst of building a hundred ninety-nine mile water trail. And I'll just send a out the documents. What I'm here for is that we have a memorandum of understanding. And because we are going for a national designation, this memorandum of understanding is the same memorandum that we send out to everyone, cause they said it has to be similar all the way through. But what mainly is the thing on yours is that we are putting some signs in Griggs County along the trail. And all the signage that we're putting in was, uh, put together by, I think I set someone between two. All the signage was put in by standards set by, um, NDDOT and the mutual, um, standards that after we met. We're a little late getting up to you because it took us, it took some NDDOT a little longer to go through everything. How they wanted it and everything. But they signed off on everything, on all the state signs. The City of Valley City signed off. Barnes County has signed off and we're all in the midst of getting all the other counties involved signed off. And you can see, we do have some signage in Griggs to get to the, um, Johnson Landing and Karnak Landing, the Hanaford Bridge Landing. Those are the main ones we get to. And we need signage off of the main highways and everything to get them in for a national trail. And so everything we're, like we said, we're doing is to, or to national trail standards. And so we're asking that we can put the signs up on your land. And we do have, um, we will main help maintain the signs, you know, the main thing we're asking of you is allow us to do it. And if you see if any signs are knocked down, let us know so we can get them fixed. We do have a reserve fund that we are building right now. Um, we have River Fest in Valley City. I don't know if you've heard of that. That's a big kayaking event in Valley City. And we run a raffle during that and the proceeds of the raffle go to the water trail that we're putting in a maintenance fund. And so we already have about fourteen thousand dollars in the maintenance fund already, so we'll be able to keep up the signage and that type of thing. We're not looking to make this a burden at all on you. What we're looking for is you assign the MOU so we can show it to the National Park Service that we have willing partners that are willing to go along with that.
So, so the only question I have is, there is no financial obligation associated with this? Okay. That, that, that's by nature, I'm kind of distrustful of the higher entities.
I can understand that.
But, but obviously this is gonna benefit the citizens of Griggs County and the surrounding counties and, and so then we, our only obligation is that of a, a little bit of oversight and a signage?
We, we, yes, we, yeah, we need, we need help. It's a hundred ninety-nine miles long. And so to keep traffic signage all the time. And I mean, we don't expect you to just go run and look at signage all the time. But when your signage, your highway department is out, if they see a sign down, please let us know. And we'll, we'll have the numbers. I think we already talked to your highway department about it already and probably has the number of our contractor to, to do that, so.
So on, on the state highways, the state will be in charge of that? On, it, none of this will be on a county road, will it?
Um, on yours?
Yeah.
I, if you look on there, you might be all the.
Well, if you set over by Hanford and, uh, Karnak and all that, I, I think.
I think the Hanaford Bridge Road, is that, that's a state.
But, yeah, but that would be a, that would be off of number one. I imagine the signage is.
I'll have a sign probably in Hanaford and then to the Bridge Road.
Sure. Right. Which is off of number one.
Yeah, that type of thing.
Okay. Wayne, any questions?
Are you okay? You talked to Bobby, didn't you?
I did.
Yeah, okay. He's the kind, he's.
If you look at the memorandum of understanding, it looks like there's a lot of responsibility for the road department.
Um, yeah.
As far as, uh, public access and stuff like that.
Well, it's, 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 it's.
Site manager, each public access, essentially responsible for maintaining the ground, providing the manages.
Okay, but you're not, you don't have any of the sites that per se, Corps of Engineers have all the sites for the trail. So they'll be maintaining all that. That's not on you, that's not on you at all. No. You're not responsible for the sites in the county. And you're, you're responsible mainly for the roads, which you're responsible for anyway. I mean, it's not a special thing you have to do to the roads just to be part of this whole thing. It's just we can't, you know, expect you.
That one, that high bridge landing is township.
Yeah.
Township road.
Yeah, that's what we're in yet, yes.
Greenfield Township.
Right. We have to work with them.
So will Wayne, will Wayne need a kayak?
You know, if he wants to come kayak, he certainly.
Or maybe a boat.
Boat, yeah.
What would be more fun?
With a fishing pole.
Yeah, you know, this, this is something that is growing big time. And we think if you get a national trail designation, we know that when they come to, come on this trail, and you know, the northern end is really the, some of the more beautiful part with the, you know, the Karnak Landing and, you know, the Johnson Wildlife Landing. Uh, you got a lot of wildlife in there, a lot of birding. I mean, last time I was up there, I saw otters and osprey. I mean, that's not, that's something you see every day around here. So I think it's gonna become very popular. So hopefully people coming through will come through, you know, Cooperstown and, and Hanaford and, you know, spend money in those places too. So that's our whole goal. And, you know, they'll look for other things to do and you have something really good up here with the Ronald Reagan site, so hopefully they'll just keep coming this way too, so.
Wayne, anything else?
No.
Anybody?
No.
Uh, barring no further discussion, we'll need a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for the Cheyenne River Water Trail Maintenance and Management Agreement.
I like the motion.
Motion by Tranby to approve the memorandum of understanding, Cheyenne River Water Trail Management, Maintenance and Management Agreement. Is there a second?
Well, second.
Second by Avery, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Agreement approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, do I get to sign? You think that was me? Is that possible?
You can.
Am I supposed to sign in here?
Please.
Okay, I think you can.
Can I have you sign yours and then I can keep it so you can. Scott, will you pass it down to her, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, do you want, are you gonna sign two or you wanna?
I got one.
Okay, that's what I wanted to finish.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
All right, appreciate that and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to old courthouse, new courthouse. Future business.
I have one more thing in the sheriff's department.
Yes.
I spoke with, um, Axon, um, just now actually. I haven't looked at the contract, but there, there's no provision in there for losing law enforcement. Um, and I haven't looked at it yet. They're willing to look at a different payment method or different payment schedule in order to help the county out. But I haven't looked to see if there's an ultimate clause for it all. So I would ask that you send that contract to this and that and see. Um, but according to their sales rep, there isn't an note to other than natural disaster. Suppose you can say it's a natural disaster, but I don't know if they'd buy that.
So you read, you haven't read the contract?
I haven't looked at it.
So we need to know what the penalties, what the penalties are for any actions we might have to take.
What are our thoughts on that? Are we, are people not wanna send it back or what, what are we, what are we looking into here?
Well, we're gonna look into what our options are. I mean, obviously, depending on who becomes sheriff in November, they might or might not want the body cams and the tasers. I mean, that's a matter of preference. And if we could delay or back out of this until we just, until we determine who's gonna be the sheriff and whether or not they even want the equipment, the fifty thousand dollars would obviously be better spent hiring deputies than body cams and tasers in a box that no one's gonna use. If that's, maybe that's not the case. We don't know, but we need to know the, what op, what our options are.
Contract's not signed or nothing, right?
I'm relatively sure the contract's signed at all.
I think we have the equipment even, but.
Yeah, Annie said that it's all in the office, so.
But we, we need to see what most contracts have, most contracts have a penalty or, yeah.
Did, do you remember, did you sign that contract? Or did Beaver sign that?
It was okayed, so someone signed it.
I just signed what you handed me. I could be signing my own death sentence.
Cause I think, I think what we signed in here, we didn't sign anything. You guys just okayed it to be paid out of that budget. I don't, I don't.
I don't remember it, but.
Think that a contract was ever came through here.
I think it was a purchase agreement, it's a purchase. Yeah.
I think it was at least a purchase.
That's right.
We'll have to find it. I mean, ask them. If, if, ask Axon. Obviously in their, in, that's gonna be the, if they have it, they have it. If they don't, they don't. I don't remember. Anything else, Jamie?
That's it.
Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you, Wayne.
Get your paddle, get ready. Future, anything else in future business? Sheriff's Department, obviously.
We'll find out on the special media.
Yeah.
With the appointments.
As soon as we find that out, yeah. So obviously, we're moving into the budget season. We haven't completed the amendments and revisions to twenty-three budget. Mainly the sheriff's department is way over budget. So next meeting, we need to have some totals on what's over budget and what is going to be under budget so that we can move some money around. One way we can do it is let, is, is take the money from the general fund that was over and apply it to the sheriff's budget. This isn't, this isn't extra money. That, all this, all this is gonna do is the fifty thousand or sixty thousand dollars we're over in the budget is gonna cost the taxpayers fifty thousand dollars extra this next coming budget season. There's no such thing as free money in this game. The money rolls over and gets used for the next year. If it doesn't roll over, it has, it's replaced next year. I think that's the only budget that's in that condition, correct? There was a couple other ones that had some smaller.
So the question is, on the twenty twenty-three budget, what, what is your goal on that? The twenty twenty-three budget?
Well, we have to balance, we have to balance the twenty-three budget. We're not allowed to, we're not allowed to have budget overruns. So we have a department that's overrun.
Okay.
And it's a, it's a yearly deal. I mean, at the end of the year, we usually, we usually see what's over, what's under, then we make, we amend the budgets accordingly.
It's sixty thousand, isn't it, or? I think it's sixty.
Mm-hmm. And all that is, is from an accounting standpoint, it's just a decrease in the general fund.
But he's within the general fund, so it's all kind of lumped together in my report. So it would be, you know, like the, the whole general fund was, you know, under.
Yeah, but, but.
But, yeah.
So the whole general fund wasn't, we didn't go over budget, the whole entire general fund, just that one department, correct?
Yeah, which, 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 which put the general fund over budget. It's a part of it. Which put money that, money was spent that wasn't allocated. And just because other funds didn't use all their money doesn't mean that was spare money. That money now will have to be replaced by a a two mil levy, basically, to replace that fifty dollars an hour for two mils worth of money. A dollar not spent is a dollar saved in this game. So we need to straighten that out. We also need to have a look at the senior citizens. As we did last year and the year before.
Yeah, they need to send up, have them send over their financials so we can look at that to see where they're.
I've got, I've got that.
What they've been doing the last few years and.
Yeah, and they've got, they've got money to maybe make it to the end of this, of this season, but their expenses are up two hundred percent, two hundred fifty percent.
Income statement in their balance sheet to see what they got in savings and such and what they've got going on there. Future plan I hear is they wanna build a garage to, to park their vehicles. But I think there's grants out there for that, but.
Well, we've been, yeah, so that's been worked on. That was the whole purpose of the, that lot next to them from the city. And in order, so far, there hasn't been any, any grants that have been found. But of course, the city will have to deed that property to, to them so that they can use that for them. But so far, there haven't been any grants that have surfaced for that. And yeah.
If they work in conjunction with the VSO, there might be some money available that way.
With the traveling, with the.
Veteran service.
Veteran service.
Mm-hmm.
That, that's a good point. I, I, what we're in need of now is somebody that's versed in, in grant applications.
So I'm gonna give a plug for the Association of Counties, but it's a good plug. The Association of Counties has contracted two engineering firms to start writing, doing a ground program, or writing grounds. Right now, they're primarily working on, on growing grounds, but the plan is, is to work on other grounds, law enforcement grounds, grounds for this. Um, so I think that'd be something that is good for, for the county to start looking on them. And they're gonna start making sure grounds are, are known to the counties. So I think, um, we need to let them know what we're looking for.
So, so what we're looking for, this, this building right now would be to house the meals on wheels, somewhere to load, bring that into and load it. Somewhere to, for the ride share bushe- buses, which are not the senior citizens, they're everybody. The city gaming, which was Oasis Board, wants to have space in their, in the building to put their machines and, you know, small space for that. The senior citizens wanna use it for, they wanna connect it to the building so that they have, they can load people through the building into the buses rather than out on the cold icy streets. And then lastly, what Jamie brought up, if we could incorporate the veterans into this, this would be, I, I can't imagine any more worthwhile organizations that the public would get behind than this. And I think, is there s- five, five vehicles? No? Five ri- five ride share buses?
Yeah, at least five.
Yeah. And right now, you know, in the wintertime, they try to park them down into the community and, and they, they're, it's hard on them having to start them. They don't stand in, you bring them up on the icy streets and cold and trying to push people on wheelchairs and get them into it. If it could be connected to the senior citizens, there, that could be the waiting area, little water or load, a door, north door and a south, so they can just drive right on through. We have a continually aging population. We need to be mindful of what government's supposed to do. It's supposed to take care of its citizens. You're gonna reach out to the?
Yeah. I'll find, I did know the guy's name and the two guys' names, but I don't really know. I'll find out.
Okay. Um, veteran service officer, you're, are you gonna, could you reach out to him? See if they're, what we're, what we're talking about and see if they would be on board with that?
Mm-hmm.
Any suggestions on that? Hey, that's all I got.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Tranby to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll think.
Second by Zorn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Meeting adjourned ten forty-five, next meeting, this chamber, June third at nine thirty AM.